Welcome to the Village of Washingtonville work session meeting today, Monday, February 7th. We could all please rise for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, eternal, just as our Good evening, everyone. Okay, said before, it's a work session, very informal. We have a couple of discussions. One would be Little League. Second would be Knights of Columbus Carnival. Third discussion is the snow removal on village sidewalks. And then we have a presentation of water meters replacement throughout the village. Really, I just have one announcement. And really, to the DPW, thank you for all the work you did this past storm. I know ice is a terrible thing, but I think everyone in here agrees that you guys did a great job. Thank you. Okay, it's very informal. The first discussion, Little League. If you wanna...
Just looking for permits to open up the concession stand at Woodfield.
Okay. I believe that comes from Orange County. Chris, am I right?
I think they need a department.
Chris Martino is the department.
Yeah, I know, we need a Department of Health Inspection.
The DPW superintendent. I'm sorry.
They need a Department of Health Inspection.
Yes.
We're just trying to get the ball rolling early so that, you know, we basically can use it this year during the season. Because the last two years, it's been basically just nothing.
And we would say yes, in case things, if something was to change, that you weren't allowed to have that. Okay, but I think everything's really coming to an end as far as the state's concerned.
Thank God.
So, it says here that you want to use Woodfield, that's a softball field, Monday through Saturday. Do you know the times?
Saturdays, we basically do, we start games at nine o'clock in the morning. And they usually go all the way through, I would say, six o'clock in the evening. Because we do all levels on Saturday. And then during the rest of the week, it would be, obviously, the kids have school. So, we would start probably earliest, five thirty. And we're really just looking for the concession stand, not the permit for the field. Like, that's different. But, uh, so it would only be on game days. And I would say five thirty to seven.
Okay.
Five thirty to seven on those Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday.
What about Sunday?
Sunday, I think, um, Sunday, they, we usually leave it open. And I think some of the travel teams book permits for Sunday, so they have the rights to the field.
Okay, so if they come in and they want to play Sunday, and you have a rain out, let's say, on a Tuesday, you'll have to reschedule it.
Yep. Have to.
I think they reserve Sundays for the men's softball leagues.
That's, that's...
No, it's Woodfield. It's the softball.
That's Blooming Grove.
So, you're looking at April?
April, May, June. And it's possible, depending on districts, All-Stars, it could go into early July. And as, just like for the, for the Little League, you know, when you start talking about hosting district games, that's when, you know, you get all these different towns coming in. That's when we don't do any, like, playing, but we just collect and sell food and whatever.
Okay.
Good for the league.
And then you're looking to use Aherne, so Burn Allen Park, Tuesday, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, five thirty to seven o'clock. That's T-ball?
I believe that's T-ball. And if anything, that would be for practices. Practices and also T-ball games.
Five thirty to seven. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. That starts in April also?
Yes.
April to June, I believe.
April to June, yep. Usually, T-ball ends, like, early June.
And then you draft them and you bring them up to the...
That's it? That's the dream.
Hey, is that, so that Villa John?
What's that?
The concession stand?
Yes.
Okay, so I can get the Department of Health Inspections out of free to on.
That is fantastic.
You're not selling hot dogs, are you?
Is it for something?
We do need somebody to sell hot dogs.
There you go. In my spare time, I guess I could come up there, at least I could put the mustard on.
Do you have a staff or...
Or eat them, yeah. You're not gonna make a big profit, are you?
It is pretty much, my wife, um, my, my other head of softball, her, her, his wife, pretty much, parents we can trust. We don't, we don't have a, you know, in COVID rules, you couldn't hire anybody that was eighteen years old. So, you know, and that's what we always did in the past, is we always hired, like, a high school kid or teenager.
Oh, yeah, we wanted to know all about that.
Yeah, and, and now we can't. So, basically, we're up to just who can we trust that, you know, are, are basically the softball families? And just try to set up, like, some kind of, uh...
Schedule meeting.
Yeah, try to set up, like, I don't know, like a Google form or something like that, where people can just sign up for time slots. I mean, I'll probably have to run it a little bit, you know, John Conklin will have to run it a little bit, hopefully, so...
Get Chad in the house. That's what Little League Baseball does, they chat in the house, keep you off the street.
I think that's why my wife wants to do it.
Yeah. Forget that laundry.
Forget the three kids.
I think that this is just like last year. You know, the only thing we will need from Little League is an application, Public Assembly.
Yeah, I could email it to you if you want, any insurance...
Insurance forms.
Perfect. Okay.
Anybody have any questions?
I just need to get the number.
Absolutely.
Usually, so, March, we'll do the inspection. Once you guys are all cleaned up and ready to open, we'll make sure...
I spent five hours cleaning that thing last year, so, I mean, I'll do another clean session by...
Whenever you're ready to.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then, and you'll work with John?
Yeah, so, uh...
Because we have, you have the fire suppression system that has to be...
Yeah, I know there's things that the Health Department will shoot us down for, like, you know, the sign that says, like, just like you're supposed to have a sign up for any kind of restaurant or serving food.
Washington.
Yeah, I, our sign is, yeah, it's not really there. So, we probably need, like, a new sign. I, I know there's other things that my wife told me about, and they're like, you're gonna fail because of this, you're gonna fail because of this, so...
They won't fail you, they'll just give you, like, a thirty day to, like, make, they, they really feel like they're gonna kill you.
I just, I just love that, you know, it's, it's getting on the ball here. Like, we're actually getting this done.
Yeah. But that's one thing, if the fire suppression system and John will, our code official will go over that with you.
Okay.
If that's not working, no one can even be in the building, so...
Got it.
Does that affect the rescues? Does it?
No.
Okay.
All right, so if you can email him.
Yeah, I'll just, if you could give me your email address after that.
You can give me your email.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. You can hang out if you don't want to go home, it's fine.
I don't have to pick up my kids yet.
But there's laundry!
Okay. Number two, Knights of Columbus Carnival.
Hello, everybody.
I think we have your application in. I think, yes. What do you look for this?
Did you guys pick a date?
It's the weekend of Memorial Day. We haven't put it, set it stone yet, we know what the exact, we're waiting for the Carnival operator to get back to us to see if the dates are available.
And that would be Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, or Friday, Saturday?
Thursday, right.
Thursday through Monday.
The setup time, remember that was probably last year, wasn't it?
Don't they come, like, Tuesday or Wednesday?
A few days early for setup, yeah.
Okay. So, that's going to affect Little League?
Just the T-ball practice.
Just the T-ball?
That's okay. Yeah.
This is the one last year where it finally seemed like a little bit of normalcy was back when we got there. I was like, yes!
It was crazy last year.
It was...
People just were dying to come.
Yes, I think I came quite a few days...
I was shocked.
I think everyone was.
Yes.
It was nice, it was really nice to see.
Yeah.
Side note about Little League, I, I don't think you have to worry about it, because the Carnival's usually on Memorial Day weekend, right? And we usually don't schedule games that weekend, so I think you're in clear...
Well, it's a practice on, uh...
The Thursday or Friday?
The Tuesday before Memorial Day that, that they set up. I think that was...
Yeah, I think they might even come Sunday, depends.
They came early.
Yeah, they came really early. It wasn't a big deal, but the farm market was going on, and it was like...
Yeah.
The end of the world, so...
I think they moved to the other side of that little creek, or whatever you wanna call it, didn't they go on the other side, near the hockey rink?
Yeah.
It worked out well for them, because it brought people to them, it actually helped them.
Right, exactly. That's a good one.
Chief Off-All, we can see you soon.
Didn't they have to do the indemnification seminar last year, Stephanie Dureck? So, it would just be the same thing, with the different dates and times?
And the insurance.
Yeah. And that's it.
Yeah, all those, all those, all that paperwork's done by the Carnival operator.
Okay.
Once we meet with him, we'll, we'll let him know exactly what he needs to do. Same as last year.
It's not your first rodeo, right?
This is my first time, I swear, this is my first time.
Okay.
He elected me, and now, I said, you better call with me, because I don't know what I'm up against now.
We were tough, weren't we? We really laid into it.
I have to go, I have to go to the bathroom now.
So are you, you don't need anything, that's it.
Okay, so once we have all that information, then, um, I mean, anybody have any questions on, on these dates?
I feel like the first time we're getting dates for anything, so it's perfect.
Okay.
You can stay here too, if you don't want to go home, unless you're gonna help him with the laundry, laundry.
So, one other thing, do we come back once we have the dates and go through another planning board session?
No, you just want to send it in.
Okay.
It's fine.
I'll drop, I'll bring it, I'll drop it off.
I know you want to come back!
Every Monday will be, whatever you need to...
There you go!
We do have to approve it based on, until we get...
It's like pending, because it's approved as a...
Motion to approve Knights of Columbus...
Pending insurance and...
Pending insurance and...
Is there anything else you need from us, or is there problems?
No, yeah, just the, uh, the insurance and...
Okay, I can come in and sign those whenever they're ready.
Okay.
Indemnification forms, I signed them last year, so...
Maybe some Zeblyes would be good.
Zeblyes?
Okay, so I need a motion?
I'll second.
Trusty Kolar, second, trustee Sampson. Role called trustee Kolar?
Yes.
Trusty Sampson?
Yes.
Trusty Kolar?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Madado?
Yes.
Bucko, yes. Okay.
Thank you.
And actually, we should do the sample.
Yeah.
All right, let's backtrack to Little League, see the motion. Except the dates that we have here, or the days that we have here, or the date that gets too early for that, because we don't have any.
Yeah, April through July, Saturday through ninety-six.
So, motion?
Well, with the same exceptions.
Yeah, the insurance, the Health Department, expecting...
Second?
I'll second.
Role called trustee Kolar?
Yes.
Trusty Sampson? Trusty Kolar?
Yep.
Deputy Mayor Madado?
Yes.
Very good. Okay, discussion trustee Kolar, snow removal on village sidewalks.
Yeah, I just wanted, like, maybe revisit or have a discussion about this, because we have, we have a lot of people who are new to the village, who don't necessarily know what the rules are. And I guess we were looking at it a week ago or so. I guess, Chris, correct me, is it a five-hour rule from after the snow stops that you're supposed to have your sidewalk? I think that's what, I think that's what we...
I think it went back and forth, I thought it was, like, forty-eight hours, but I...
Somebody looked it up, I thought, it was a five-hour order. Reg, did you look up this five-hour rule?
It says five, four, long.
So, like, for example, like, if we, if we follow that, and then we have a snowstorm that ends at eleven o'clock at night, we expect people to be out there by four o'clock in the morning?
No, there's, there's an ordinance that tells you for the time. It's on ECO, I didn't print it out.
Yeah, I think it's, uh, because somebody, Leeway, if it's an overnight storm, for example.
But if it ends at, like, one in the afternoon, then yes, it's five hours.
Okay, so I, I think we just need to communicate with the village, the residents, because...
You explain that, what's a role called?
And business owners, yeah, and business owners.
And business owners.
Mostly business owners, because mostly MHD is business, this is presidential, it's mostly business.
Well, one of the issues that we have, or one of the concerns we keep in mind is how much time do they need? You can't put a violation on someone, if ours is.
Right.
That's, that's for example.
And, and I wanted to talk about the, the village center. What, what is the rule of the state having to put in the snow? Explain that to me.
The, and I've been in contact with Nicole from Assemblyman Schmidt's office, who is setting up a meeting between the state and outside. I went over this today, Chris. The, um, if, if the stores clean the sidewalk, and the state comes by and throws the snow back on it, it's up to, they have to clean the sidewalk together.
So what does the state actually clean?
Nothing. Curb to curb, right? Is, is that their...
That's all they're supposed to do, not the streets, obviously.
No, they do the streets, they don't do the sidewalks.
Right.
So what, 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 do they do, all Route ninety-four in the village, and all two oh eight in the village?
Yes. All right, the meeting that we, we plan, that we're planning on having, is they need to clean up between the sidewalk and the street, the mounds. Okay? Because it's technically their snow. Or help us. I think last week, you guys were out, or the week before, they went out to clean, to clean, and it's costing the village money when it shouldn't.
Why don't we ask the town to help us with that, if we can't get the state to do it?
We could.
Didn't we bill them once? Or does they have money back, the state?
The state did, I think it was, was the initials, with EWR, extreme weather.
So I've been asking around, I've been asking around to other villages, in Chester and Cornwall, they seem to be, they do it themselves. And I wonder if they, they bill, they bill the...
Well, they do it themselves because they might not be on state work.
But nine forty.
Nine forty.
Chester.
Right, but that's not what they did, probably doing that downtown Chester, which is all Chester, it's the village of Chester. Cornwall, I don't believe Cornwall has, other than, I don't think Cornwall has a state highway going through.
Two eighteen building over there, the highway.
Yeah, but I don't know what's on, I mean, it's something that we'll get to.
Yeah.
You know, but that's what I'm waiting for, and maybe I need to call the call back, and send these meetings out.
And when, when we, when we explain, or when we think that sidewalks are gonna be cleared, is that just, like, a shovel clearance? Or is it supposed to be sidewalk clearance?
Sidewalk clearance, that's my understanding, right, sidewalks.
Yeah, there's no minimum or maximums in sidewalk.
Yeah, I, I know, I sent Susan out today, to talk to the stores. I don't know how far she got, or what they did, but it, I think it cleared up pretty quickly. But last week, it was Orange County Bagel, we had to call them in, it was more than three days, and we were still there. Thirty-six North Street. We actually hired a contractor...
Still there, yeah.
Still there. We hired a contractor who will eventually build the village, and will build the, the owners. The owner's up in front of zoning, where they...
Actually, I think tomorrow, planning.
Are they up in front of planning?
And maybe the planning board, we made aware to bring that up.
Yeah. Well, I need to bill first. But, no, okay, they do, they keep doing it.
Yes.
Yes, I think they are.
Yes, there's the meeting at seven.
Yeah, I, I, I think our roads are wonderful. I just, I just see when you drive around, two days after a snowstorm, you know, people walking, and, you know, you kind of forget that, you know, if you didn't grow up in a community where you had to do that, and you're coming in from an area that you never had to do it before, maybe it should remind them.
So, role call.
A role call, yeah, yeah, that'd be great. Let's get one of those fun role calls, where you sing the message, Mr. Mayor.
You want him to sing?
Yeah.
Elaborate and listen.
You did, you could do that.
They copy and copy also, right?
No, I said, "need to," but not you.
But you never sing, so...
I'm just sort of guessing.
Good guess.
Excuse me, did you, did you say that if you clean your sidewalk, and the town comes by and covers it up again?
You're poor, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I found that out last week when I spoke to the attorney. And I understand what, it was the question that I asked him. He lives in the home, right, because I made A-plus.
Right, because it's on a curve.
Say it's red.
And that, it all comes, I mean, basically, they put a foot of snow on my sidewalk every time they go by.
Uh, I could get the law for you, but that was one of the, the questions that I, I spoke to our attorney. Because last year, the year before, you shoveled the sidewalk, you sent me pictures of it.
Yeah.
And then three minutes later, the state comes and throws it back on. We also had a meeting with, at that time, Assemblyman Scoofis. And it's just, I could get the law for you, I don't like it. Okay, I don't like the law, but...
And when they push it back on, it's more snow than what he shoveled off, so that makes sense.
Yes, and it's heavy.
Yes, it's solid ice, definitely. And to be honest with you, I can't remove it, I'm getting a little old for that, and nor will I. I'll just, if I, if it becomes a rule where I have to do it, I'll move.
Well, it's, it's not, there's nothing that we could do...
I get it.
With it, okay?
I get it.
But we'll fight for you, okay, for your interest, because I don't like it, I don't think anyone here likes it.
You can't find kids in a neighborhood to do it anymore.
No.
That's right. No, it's unbelievable.
Not at all.
And it doesn't seem, it doesn't seem fair to, uh...
I know it's been that way forever. And it's not just Washington.
And they get right down to the sidewalk, I've seen these pics, I was gonna hire you.
I'm not saying...
You know, and then the cloud comes and throws it right back again.
Frustrating.
It just, it's very frustrating. Why don't we touch base later on this week?
It has to be curb to curb, they do, not white line to white line.
The state, the state's responsible for curb to curb. Okay. So, you want to get together on Thursday, maybe? You have time on Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday?
To do what exactly? To do what?
Well, I could, I could show you what, what, what the attorney will show me, will give me, or I could just forward it to you.
Yeah, you can email it to me.
Okay. I know that's not news you wanted to hear. I wasn't that happy giving it to you. Any questions on, um, on this, but we, we, what we can do is look at that whole law at times, I mean, but we gotta, I don't think it would be fair for us to go have violations out, the fire cycles out.
I agree with you.
Put the pressure on you. All right. Anybody have any other comments they want to add?
I would love to put the other snow brigade up, young kids, maybe we can kind of, you know? Kids are at school or whatever, and, and defend. Get the residents, maybe, or get a list of people who would be willing to shovel it twice. It's a visual list, we'll talk next year.
You're the manager.
I was just gonna say, teachers said they can even hire it.
I know, kids now don't shovel, like, we...
We make good money as a kid doing it.
Unless you, you know, or...
No, you can't throw it in the street, but...
Generally, over my little wall onto the front.
Yeah.
But it's still, as they pick it up all along this road, by the time they get to my curve, they're usually going really fast. And it's just...
And that's the problem.
And that's part of the problem, too, because, yeah, the laws of science, that's what it's gonna do, it's gonna fly over and land at your door, you know?
It, it's, uh, when you told me that, I said, you know, well, something's wrong, but that doesn't...
It doesn't seem right, and it is more snow than what you shovel.
It tends to make them stick.
Yeah, maybe we could have them stand there while it comes down.
Well, it could be part of that conversation that I'm gonna have with, uh, with Collins, Nicole, who's setting up with the state.
Yes, actually, if they probably just went a little slower, it wouldn't come that far.
Right. But they're on twelve-hour shifts, right? Is that how that works?
They're on a shift that comes by every time I go in the house.
But, yeah, I, I think it's just speed, if, if they want to slow down.
Definitely, yes.
But then they might be, when you're not doing it, you're driving properly, who knows?
Know if they're speeding.
They're playoff school.
You ever pull a state up?
Yeah. Next meeting.
We'll figure it out. Okay. All right, presentation of water meters replacement. We have, what, three hundred meters, new ones?
Twelve, yeah.
Right?
So far.
So far. We have nineteen hundred.
Roughly around two thousand meters total. Would you like me to hook up?
Please, yeah.
Or would you like me to sit? The connections up here. Enjoy it, I will, uh, we'll follow it. John wants back to...
Yes!
Thank you, thank you very much. Tell Aaron to say hi, let's talk Wednesday.
I used to work on a hot dog truck, so if you need help, let me know.
Anytime.
I've got good spirit.
Your sales, yeah, you know, you'll run out of hot dogs.
I see, I own a hot dog truck, I used to work on it.
Okay, I see, I mean, I think it's kind of strange sitting behind everybody.
It's nothing.
It's your show.
Just don't sit in the wheelchair that falls, okay?
Tell me that now.
Sorry, I just thought of it.
If something's not working out, I'm gonna turn you off.
I'm sorry about that.
Don't lean back, don't lean back.
They're like hitting me many...
So Jimmy and I met, was it last week, regarding the meters with, with Mike?
Let that warm up here for a second, I guess.
Oh, yeah, you know, it was your, your computer.
Oh, was it?
Yeah.
My name is Michael, I'm with Core Maine.
There you go.
Probably already have one of those. Probably already have about six of those. You guys? So I'm the product specialist for Core Maine, I cover the eastern part of New York State. I am all that is meters. So, I do everything from presentations to troubleshooting in the field, the quotes, and sales orders, things like that. So, I guess I'll just jump right into it. Is that good?
Yeah.
Trying to fall asleep. I'll do the same. Uh, so, I want to talk to you about the differences between AMR and AMI, and I'll talk about what AMR and AMI means.
And I'll talk about what AMR and AMI means, but I do have a quick agenda. I'll talk about why we meter and why it's important and, you know, what you're currently using and some of the problems that are associated with that method. Uh, and then definitions of AMI and AMR and, you know, the differences between those, different types of reading methods. I have AMI deployment on here, if you're interested, I can give you a system demo of what AMI is. Uh, and I can talk about some key considerations, you know, why Core Main, why the Census Product Line, and then as well as what we call Core Plus, which is, you know, additional services and software packages. So there are costs associated with providing your residents with clean, safe drinking water, right? You have company like J C O that comes in, or you might have your own employees that are monitoring as well as keeping up with your distribution system, pumping costs, chlorination costs, things like that. And you want to make sure that you accurately capture the consumption that and hold your your property owners accountable for that consumption. In most cases, it's the only other source of revenue other than taxes for the town or village. Uh, and so it's important to have an additional revenue stream and then dedicate that money to your water department. In some cases, we end up seeing, you know, folks move that money to general fund, which is not necessarily recommended. Um, and then more importantly, you want to utilize metering to discover leaks in unaccounted for water, your your non-revenue water throughout your system. So I have samples of different meters, if you're interested. Is anybody interested in seeing demo meters or?
Sure.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just show you the I Pearl. Give me the options.
We have the I Pearl right there.
We have the I Pearl. Yeah, so there Census offers a couple of different products, they call them I Pearl, S R two, AccuStream, uh, and then there's some commercial and industrial meters. The I Pearl utilizes a new moving part technology.
Which one's the most expensive?
What's that?
Which one's the most expensive?
Actually, it would be this one.
Really?
Yeah, so this is, this is this meter, it's just the guts. So you can see everything is encapsulated under glass. Um, and then this one utilizes the same technology as the I Pearl, but it actually has a three-state valve valve in it. It has temperature and sensor, or temperature and pressure sensors as well built into it. The I Pearl gives you extremely low flow accuracies.